Mr. Mayor, Council, Mr. Carter. I don't come with a flashy presentation today just the request of what I believe to be a bona fide need of the Casper Police Department. So for quite some time we have become accustomed to having in-car videos. Our CO-BAND video system is now becoming quite dated in its technology and we're showing that it's beginning to fill our needs on a very routine basis. Societal expectations of the police departments that serve their communities has never been higher than it is today. They have very high expectations that the police officers are performing all of their duties according to the mission statement of the department and the wishes of the community. One of the primary tools that we have to advance that effort is the use of police body-worn cameras. As you see that it's become much the, it's the norm across the nation rather than the exception. I myself have come from a police department where for nearly a decade now we have been having both the in-car cameras for two decades and the body-worn cameras for approximately a decade. And the combination of those two things has proven to be invaluable on multiple occasions. Since my arrival here in the city of Casper there have been a multitude of circumstances where had we had the body-worn cameras, we could have saved all kinds of man-hours, anguish, and you know, time kind of running things down trying to, to take care of allegations against officers' conduct versus our need, in addition to our need to know what exactly was occurring at a scene. And so in the backend we are spending administrative hours galore when we simply had we had that footage available to us with a few keystrokes could review it and be done in five minutes. The reality is this, Council, is that they come with a cost, all technology does. It comes with an expiration date. We have done our due diligence. We have, we have had multiple vendors come and display their wares to us. We've researched those out and we continue to look for what's best for the city of Casper. But it is my opinion that I submit to the Council that these are an integral part of our joint effort to move the community of Casper forward and its police department forward, ever increasing its professionalism and the tools available for us to fulfill our mission statement. I am estimating before you, this is a, just a off-the-cuff estimate because we don't, we don't want to get involved in the negotiations of the purchasing of products until I have approval from this body. But roughly speaking, it's, you know, going to be in that million dollars plus area. It's down substantially from, from my original estimates. And I am very confident that the money that is available to me on one cent monies, number fifteen, that were already allocated by this body towards police services and police equipment is enough to cover the needs that I have to, to bring this product to bear as a tool for the Casper Police Department. I would entertain any questions, but you know, the events of this last week are demonstrable on what a value they would be to the community and I submit to you that it's, it's long overdue.
Questions? Chief, Delce.
Chief, does this mean that each officer gets a, I'm going to call it a camera? Or is it, is there a number that you have and then when they're on duty they use it? And then they transfer them to each other like a card each other?
So, so the proposal that I'm trying to accomplish is an integrated system that incorporates, it updates our in-car cameras to modern technology and it incorporates, integrates the two together. Also it integrates into my interrogation and interview rooms and our soft interview room. It incorporates all of those things together. Every officer that is routinely assigned to patrol duties would have one specifically assigned to it. The costs of this program that I'm submitting to you covers all costs for five years. We own the product. At the end of that five years, you know, we would then be responsible for maintenance and upkeep, but during that five-year period it's a comprehensive program that pays for, for all replacement, all maintenance, all upgrades, so forth and so on. So that is, it is one per officer and with several that are standing by on backup in case one goes down, we ship it off to the manufacturer and there's one available to us free of charge to use in its absence.
Thank you. Chris?
This is going to replace a system that's ten years old at least, right?
Yes, at least.
Think of how many computers, anything you've got, think of your cellphone that's ten years old. Okay, my support completed.
So, Councilman, Mr. Mayor, Councilman, what I would tell you is the technology has advanced so far from where we are today that I, it's my opinion that Council and the community will be very pleased with the product that we get from that.
Chief, I, I support the concept totally. I do have a concern and you guys will hear me voiceless from time to time because one of my worries is that officers start to rely on these technologies instead of relying on their own powers of observation, their own powers of recollection, their own powers of watching to see what, what's going on. And that's worrisome for a couple of reasons. One, if the technology fails and if the officer is not routinely in the habit of making and remembering all of those observations. Because I've seen, you know, when, when cops first got these cameras, I know there were guys that, well, I'm going to go back to the station and watch the videotape and, and make my report based on that. And I think that's a bad sloppy practice. I think they should be teaching themselves that no, I have to make all of these observations and recollections when they happen, then I can go back and reconfirm them with that. But with that reservation, I support the idea very much. I think it's a good idea. We need to move forward with that.
Mayor, Mr. Mayor, Mayor, Councilman Hoover, I appreciate those are very astute comments and ideally the, you know, an ideal law enforcement practice is the officers conduct their investigation, they, they do their reports, they fill out their affidavits without having had to review to those. And so we, we do ascribe to a level of professionalism where this is something that is available to us that we're not reliant upon. It does, it does prove to be invaluable during, you know, internal affairs investigations, feedback as we're training new officers, you know, providing them with the opportunities to learn from their mistakes. There are myriad good things. There are a few, a few downsides to it and I would submit to you that, that it's up to the management to make sure that we don't have officers that become over-reliant upon technology to do the job of what we're paying them to do, which is be human, human beings of making observations, making decisions and acting out on those decisions according to the law.
Delce? I'm for, for one big reason. Statutorily, we're entrusted as a city council with providing for the safety of our constituents. And I think this adds to their safety tremendously, used properly and under your guidance aligning for it. And it's in a time where we're pinching pennies, Chief, you know that, don't we?
Absolutely.
We've got to pinch pennies, but I think that we're required to spend the pennies on, I believe, safety first for our citizens.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman, I would agree with you that the police department recognizes the financial duress that the city is under is substantial, that this constitutes a significant expense. It's my, I submit to you that this is a worthwhile expense that will, that will pay dividends equal to or greater than the expense that's going into it. And I see these as a powerful tool to build public trust in the police department and an opportunity to highlight the, the acts of bravery, the acts of compassion, the acts of understanding, the acts of patience and tolerance that our officers do every day that, that otherwise are unknown.
Thank you.
So Chief, do you need a tentative support from us tonight?
I, Mayor, I believe that the discussion is forthcoming in the capital improvements plan that the Council's about to entertain and, and so I'm not sure if I need a yes to that.
Okay.
I would defer to the city manager.
If, if we could get a yes if Ca, if Council's ready to go, then I think we're, that'd help.
Okay.
Thank you.
Could I ask you one more question?
No.
Are you in favor of, of a new police station?
You don't have to answer that. Wait, but that's my line. You don't have to answer that, Chief.
Yes, you do, Chief. The Casper Police Department is in desperate need of being updated and I appreciate Council's support on that matter. I, I believe I have a very supportive Council that is addressing that need.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chief.
That means yes?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
I think he must have been a lawyer.
Yeah, he, he doesn't realize now he has two lawyers on his council so he, he can get it from each side of the table.
I think the Chief is up to the challenge.
I think he is.
So second on our agenda, we have a budget review, which is our capital budget discussion. Carter?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the Council. If, if I could direct your attention to the packet that you have in front of you, we, I just need you to turn to the first tab in that packet and we can go over some of the documents that we put together for this discussion. What Mr. Hopkins to join us looks like. Oh, okay.
Councilman Hopkins is on the phone. You've got the wrong number.
Didn't sound like him, I know that.
Is he kidding?
It didn't sound like Bob. Go ahead, keep going.
All right. That's a hard act to follow right there. To the first page of that particular tab, if you don't mind, what you see here, if you don't mind tolerating a little bit of an orientation on this spreadsheet, along the top of the spreadsheet you see the variety of funds that we have available, or at least that we would recommend being available for our capital agenda over the next fiscal year, namely 1% 15, 1% 14, which are funds left over from that particular cycle of 1% funding, 1% 13. We have what we call Fund 30, which is a general fund, capital fund, that does not include 1% dollars. And then we have a Fund 31, which is capital equipment, which is populated with 1% dollars. And then of course perpetual care. And perpetual care is a fund that has been established for many, many years for the purpose of providing for the care and maintenance and from time to time capital replacement of buildings that were built with 1% dollars. And then we have another category which is used infrequently in this proposal with regard to specific reserves that were established for particular facilities and, and functions in the organization. And we'll get into where, where we will be using that later. The first page is the Priority One projects that staff identified for your consideration this evening to be used over the next 12 months, starting July 1. To give you a frame of reference, if you will, the police chief's project that he just described is actually located in column one.
Hi, Bob, welcome.
I don't know whether it was me knocking.
It was you. It was you.
It's not meant to be for Bob.
Let me see it next. I'll get him on there.
To give you a frame of reference, the chief's project that he just described to you is located under 1% 15 and it's entitled Police Video System. And that is what we are talking about funding if, of course, Council adopts the capital plan as a whole and obviously you've given your direction with regard to this particular project specifically, so. With regard to Priority Two projects, if you turn the page, we are recommending a variety of projects and their funding sources over the next year as well. Priority Two, in our opinion, is still very important, albeit not Priority One kinds of projects, and we certainly would recommend that they move forward as well as a part of the capital plan as a whole. And you can see the variety of projects associated with that level of priority as well. The next page, and again, I'm just going through an orientation of what you have in front of you here. Many of you probably read a lot of this information already, but if you look at the third page, you have a summary of the projects themselves and the total and the category that they fall into. Now you will see those same categories throughout if you look at the colors that you have next to that spreadsheet of information, that you can kind of follow throughout all of these spreadsheets. That gives you just another layer of information should you be interested in. The final page in this capital plan summary is with regard to the guiding documents themselves that we are using for direction for the various funds, particularly as they relate to 1%. And the thing that I want you to be real clear on with regard to this information is, we did consult with the original resolution that, that authorized projects to be had in each of the 1% allocations so that the recommendations that you have, you can be sure that those suggestions on our part are consistent with the direction that you gave way back when. It could be 1% 13, eight years ago or more, it could be 1% 14, et cetera. And so hopefully by looking at this information, you get not only a review of information as to what projects were completed, but also what room we have to do projects for fiscal year 19 pursuant to the, the directions that you gave years and years ago. A couple other brief comments. With each of the enterprises that you have here later in your packet, we have also included a list of capital projects that we view being necessary for the next fiscal year that will need to be done outside of 1% and some of these select funds that we've identified on the capital plan spreadsheet, but will be done within the rates, the rate models, if you will, in regards to and with respect to each of the enterprises that would sponsor those projects. So again, for example, if you flip to the, my tab is a blue tab, you will see the Water Fund pro forma and then behind that, a list of capital projects that will be completed pursuant to your approval outside of the 1% funds that we've identified on your, on your previous capital plan spreadsheet and dependent upon the rate revenue that's generated with each of these funds. Okay, so we've got, we've got a multiple, multiple source of information that makes up what we would consider is your capital plan for fiscal year 19. And we're going to go through all the information, whatever detail you'd like tonight. If you would like to have a booklet that also describes each of the projects that we've identified in summary form this evening, we can provide that as well. And while we don't have that here before you tonight in written form, we can discuss any project you want to talk about. We can discuss the funding source with any project you want to talk about. And of course my objective is to seek your approval of the capital plan because this plan is critical with regard to understanding how our budget needs to be designed and developed from this point forward as we prepare for that May 21st meeting, whatever that date is, where we roll out the budget as a whole.
And so with that, Mr. Mayor, I take any questions. Can you?
I just want to make sure that we're going to have a lot of detailed PowerPoint slides during all these. Just kidding.
I hope not, seriously.
We're trying to boil that down.
Two weeks of PowerPoint.
So does the pleasure of the Council.
I do want, he's talking about what to, what did you call that, the summary?
A booklet that gives you worksheets on each of the projects.
When will we get that?
We can make that happen in your information package this week.
Very good. I'm for that.
Okay. We can do that. You betcha. You betcha.
Is everybody okay with that?
Mm-hmm.
Anything else?
And then I'll be happy to read it to Councilmen Hoover then.
You know, come on to every little thing. Go ahead.
Will that information packet cover all of these outside agency fundings and then their performance or if we have any gauge of measurements on it, you know, if they say they're doing? I know that that's hard to do sometimes.
It can be, it can be. Mr. Mayor, Councilman, we certainly can provide that level of information as well. The applications that you have in front of you with regard to those items. We have specific recommendations for as well and would drive, I think, a lot of what you might want by way of follow-up information for that too. So pursuant to what we'd like to see, you betcha, we can, we can provide it all. Absolutely.
Go ahead, can you?
In the documents that you guys are going to share, will there be like attendance and use information so that like, I guess, catsy on the weekends? I'd like to know how many people are actually participating in weekend transportation so I can compare it to maybe what goes on during the week?
Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman, the value of tonight's discussion is, is just that, trying to gather what information you would like to see in addition to what we have for you tonight. And if that is what is of interest to the Council, we, we will put it together for you and make sure it's in the information package this week.
Chris?
And I don't know if you can do it, you know, we know what they worked on at the wastewater plant, the project worked on a lot of places. But I look at water waste, water refuse collection and then the projects, I guess what, is there any way to prioritize those?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. The answer is yes. You sure can.
They're all a priority, right?
Of course.
But if something's breaking right now, I...
Right, right. Most definitely, though. Yeah, ten of them. Any other needs or wants that we might have?
I just want to make sure I understand the, the screen category where it talks about pass-through. That's money that comes from some other source that is passed through the city to administer or whatever.
The, Councilman Hoover, Mr. Mayor, if I may, with regard to the agency funding portion of your agenda tonight, the pass-through category is actually in reference to agencies that we work with to give city funding to and they administer funding to agencies that apply and are successful in their application.
Okay, so city money passes through these things?
You betcha, you betcha. The Community Action Partnership. The Community Action Partnership is probably our primary pass-through agency that we use and Central Wyoming Senior Services is one of the recipients potentially in that discussion. And we've got recommendations for that as well that we'd like you to consider when we get to that part of our agenda.
Anything else?
Are we going through all the sections right now?
Yeah, we have.
I just want to jump ahead if you're going to take us category by category.
I tell you what, let me, let me seed that conversation a little bit with a couple of the projects that I've been getting a lot of questions about and then I think if it's okay with the Council, we can take whatever questions you'd like to entertain. I've already given you a point of reference with regard to the body cams and so on. Let me take you to the top of that, let's see, let me make sure I find it here. The police department project, station project, if you will. Oh, there it is. You look on page two, under Priority Two, and look under column two, under 1% 14, we have a category called Police Station Design Engineering by halfway down that column in, in sort of a orange type color. You see an entry there of $300,000 in that particular part of the capital plan. What we are proposing for that expensive money is with regard to the effort that we think would be important to undertake as it relates to two critical questions. The first question I think needs to be whether or not we like the idea of considering a joint facility between both fire and police that would be built to serve both functions, if you will. And the, of course, if that is the discussion and the decision, that points us in a completely different design process compared to doing just a standalone police department and where it ought to be located and how it should function and be designed. So the effort that we want to undertake with that $300,000 is not only the design services necessary, but what exactly from a broader standpoint we think we want to design at the end of the day. Because you will also hear, and we discussed in retreat, the idea that Station One, on the fire department's side of the discussion, may need some major repairs and/or total replacement in order to complete our building agenda, if you will, with the, with the fire station and the fire department.
Chris?
I, I think it's a good idea to do, to explore all those different options and I would just encourage everybody, when it comes to combining police station and fire station administration, with a fire station, if it includes the housing of Station One vehicles, that's got to be completely driven by the fire department because it's based on their response times. And I think we need to listen to the chiefs on how they want to set those things up. So, and there was a time, a long time ago, when that was kind of an initial plan that we were kicking around, but things may have changed, so. Location for Station One for its services is based on the needs of the community and how fast they can respond to it, admin buildings. I like the idea of exploring it and then I don't know how much we need to poke our fingers into what type of building, but the options are good.
Delce?
This is directed at Councilman Walsh. Would it, is it going to cost twice as much to do a double building as it would just the single building?
No, it would probably be cheaper.
Really?
Yeah, instead of building two.
Now, that would be, that, that would make me before that, but I, I don't want to do something that's so grandiose it just never gets done either.
We talked in the past, and when I say we talked, me and Mark Young had some ideas on the administration buildings and Station One, because I believe that's the last on your rotation for replacement, but it is part of the replacement overall plan and it needs shifted a little bit based on the needs of the city, so. I don't know where it needs shifted to, which would meet an administrative building or if a huge renovation in that one and taking over vacant floors is a better idea, there's the options I guess just need to explore.
I know the city's kept up with the fire department pretty well, but I think the police department is...
I think they like them better.
Police department's running way behind on their facility, so I, I really wouldn't want to do anything.
Go ahead, Councilman.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I defer with, with, with Councilman Walsh. I, I think, quite honestly, the, the needs of the PD and the fire department are a little bit different and so I think we need to listen to our staff on how we would develop a joint fire station number one and PD and let them sort out the difficulties of that and we'll proceed from there. Thank you.
Thanks, Bob.
I wanted to finish my statement, which is, I want to do that as well, but I really don't want to have anything interfere with getting a new police station as quickly as we can by, by some grandiose plan that we may have difficulty funding and I don't know whether that'll be the case or not.
Mr. Mayor, Council, another part of this conversation really needs to be with regard to the appropriate site. And that again hinges upon the direction we want to go. I mean, if we go with an independent police station versus a combined facility, as Councilman Walsh, that we've seen earlier, you know, those have real significant bearing on where, in fact, would be the best location. And so a part of that $300,000 also would be site location and appraisals kinds of things and... And so a part of that $300,000 also would be site location and appraisals kinds of things and, and et cetera. So we hope to get a lot done with the funding that we would be fortunate to be allowed to access with this project. But a lot of it unfortunately would be preliminary versus actually creating vertical elements to a new building or, or whatever. So we've got a lot of questions we need to answer, and we wanna answer them as correctly as we can in this period of time. And this funding would be very helpful in that regard.
So what do you need from us?
That, that was information, again, to try to answer some of the questions that I've been getting about that project in particular. Cause that project has been getting a lot of attention lately. Another project that's been getting a lot of attention lately is with regard to the ice plant. And that, of course, is located at the ice arena. And we are recommending that indeed that be funded as well through, let's see. Yes, that's it, thank you. On page one, your priority one funding, if you look at the first category, which of course is 1% 15, we need approximately $300,000 to finish the funding requirement to complete the replacement of the ice plant at the ice arena. We, we do have funding from this fiscal year in the amount of roughly $1.1 million. And pursuant to the bid process that we undertook twice now, we are anticipating that the 1.4 will be more reflective of where we think the bidding dot, of the bidding environment is going with regard to getting that project complete. So you see $300,000, that's a, a low amount pursuant to what the overall project is. But if we get the authorization to move forward with this plan, then that would wrap up the funding necessary to get that plant replacement complete. And hopefully in time for the ice making season that we have the height for in the winter. So that's why that number looks different than what you've probably heard in the past. But at least you know that that is also on the agenda and, and, and moving forward. And certainly one of those projects that I've gotten a lot of questions about as well.
I know all the hockey players and ice skaters ask me about it.
I bet, I bet they do.
Anybody have questions about that?
What's that, Chris? Head of the U.S.
Yeah, it is.
It is, indeed. So with that, Mr. Mayor, if it pleases Council, I'd be happy to entertain any other questions you might have. What projects are what, where you think the funding should come from, any of the above, and we can do our best to entertain them.
Any further questions for Carter, the staff on this?
No. Well, we will create the inform, not create, but we will assemble the information, get it to you this week. And I am open to questions at any time with regard to any of the projects you may generate additional to tonight.
So moving along, we've got the general agency funding requests.
Thank you, sir, yes, if we could. The, the tab that we will be looking at now is your clear tab in your binder. And one of these spreadsheets is gonna look very familiar to you in that we produced a spreadsheet in the past. But as information and time would typically require, the information has evolved to what we think is, is, is more accurate. And that's with regard to the spreadsheet that Judge Huber was referencing earlier. And it's entitled Outside Agency Funding for Fiscal Year 18. We hope that you will view that spreadsheet as a very comprehensive review of your relationship with agencies outside of the organization that you provide funding for. As we've discussed in the past, a number of those agencies receive funding in not one way, but in multiple ways through the city of Casper. And this spreadsheet probably has that advantage of showing you and illustrating which agencies fall into that category of multiple funding streams through the city of Casper. And so as we go through tonight's discussion, we can certainly talk in more detail about that as you and your thirst for information would require. However, for tonight's very specific discussion, I'd like to flip you back one page to the general fund agency application funding for fiscal year 19 and walk you through that a little bit. We just took applications for what we call is the agency funding program that is funded primarily through the general fund. And as you might guess, I have a high interest in trying to reduce the burden on the general fund in supporting outside agencies. That is a, a, a primary motivation with regard to a number of the recommendations you're gonna see this evening on this particular category. Reducing financial burdens on the general fund for outside agency funding. That would mean agencies that are not City of Casper agencies, to be clear. We received 14 applications for funding through this program this year. And you will also see that I'm using this process as kind of a springboard for larger recommendations that I'd like you to consider that have impacts on other programs that you utilize to also fund entities and agencies outside of the city's purview. One of those agencies, just to kinda give you an orientation on the spreadsheet you have in front of you, is the County Health Department. That is an agency that we have a contractual agreement with wherein we provide some $500,000 to $600,000 to every year. Now, the recommendation that I have for these folks is a little unique in that pursuant to the requirements of that agreement, I do not feel comfortable that we could recommend that agency being funded outside of the general fund. I think we have the obligation to include that in the operational funding that, that we are allotted through sales tax and other means in order to provide for that obligation to the health department. So I'm not recommending that the general fund be reduced by that burden, okay? So that's a fairly unique recommendation I have this evening. But if you look at that particular entry, you can see that in fiscal year 18, we, the city provided, or is in the process of providing, $540,000 for their operational needs. The county has a similar obligation, albeit probably a little more than this. But you'll notice in column C that they are suggesting they need $600,000 from the city of Casper. They also, however, have received just over $67,000 in funding through 1% 15. And I believe that was for the provision of rolling stock, if I remember correctly, is that right? Right, yeah, okay. They, they have a reserve amount of what appears to be just under $2,000, which as you might guess, doesn't give them a lot of days of operation in reserve. Our recommendation, however, that, that column C, that should be the second C, is entitled Staff Recommendations. We're proposing that they be awarded $540,000 through our agreement with them.
And that's what we've had la, in the last, last year's opiate?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yep, you're exactly right. And then, of course, there's a note column that gives you some specific information pursuant to that particular discussion.
Mr. Mayor. Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, Chris, go ahead.
Will that supporting document that, that you give us provide what they were gonna use with that additional 60 grand? So we'll know what's, you kind of-
It does, it does indeed.
Yeah, go ahead, Dulce.
Mr. Manager, where here is the money we, we put through the Joint Powers Board for CADA? Where does that show up on?
CADA, Mr. Mayor, Councilman, does not show up in this particular spreadsheet because they have not been asked in the past to provide an application through this program in order to receive funding. And so I'm recommending that the health department be treated the same way. And therefore, in future spreadsheets for this program, would not include the County Health Department, if you agree. Because I, I, I would suggest that because of our contractual arrangement, we probably do not need to put them through this type of rigor that the other social service agencies would otherwise be expected to do.
I'm not sure I follow your logic on that.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, Councilman, we do not have contractual obligations to provide funding for any of these other organizations. CADA, the Health Department, and a couple others, however. We do have contractual obligations and a real limited means by which we can get out of those obligations. And so it seems, um, it doesn't make sense to me why we would ask this agency and none of the other agencies with similar arrangements to go through an application process to receive funding. Now, that's not to say that they would not provide us some sort of letter or performance information or whatever that we would want reports on, because I do think that's appropriate. Having to take the extra step, however, of running through an application process like, say, the empowerment council would, is not consistent to me.
One of the things that I hope that we would do through the city attorney's office is, is get some opinion as to whether these long-term contracts are, for lack of a better term, legal and binding on the city.
Right.
Because we've discussed the CADA one that says it's perpetual, and then the law of the state of Wyoming seems to indicate that you can't bind councils forever on these contracts. And of course, these things always come up when money is short, and money's short. So I kinda wanted to get the council in a position, if possible, to be able to review all these every year and see what our priority was with our money and, and, and the request of every organization, whether we have a contract or not. Because I, I think they all have to be on a, the same legal playing field. I just don't think it's right that we bind councils 20 years down the road to have to pay out money when councils who pass it may have been in a boom time and then the next council is in the bust time. And I hope we can somehow straighten that out.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman, I, I think you'll be pleased then because it certainly is the plan. I think with these, these extra agency contractual obligations that we have, I do think they ought to be talked about every year. Albeit on a different plane, if you will. And so that's what I'm proposing with this particular agency.
Mr. Mayor Hopkins here.
Oh, go ahead, Bob.
Oh, thank you, I, I know I'm a long way away and I'm not physically there, but I, I concur with our city manager. We, we have different groups and they do different things. And I really believe that each one of these folks, they deserve something. But I think we need to have them step up to the same standards. And I think, quite honestly, CADA has given a great deal of information, something to the order that for every dollar we spend with them, they return $5 in, in actual services and actual jobs and actual numbers. So I, I, I concur with our city manager in saying, I'm, I'm going with what he tells us to do. I think he knows what he's doing and he's doing a good job on it. So with that, I'm over it, thank you.
Thanks, Bob.
Mr. Mayor, I, I would just wanna make one comment here. I noticed that item number two under the general fund agency thing is Casper Mountain Fire District. Although I'm not still the chief up there, I am still an officer there. And so I'll proclaim a conflict on any votes or anything that has to do with that. I would also note that on the next page, there's something about mountain fire service redundancy. What I would point out is that it's always been the position of the Casper Mountain Fire Department that, and I think the position of councils over the years, that in essence, that payment that has always been made to, to us up there is kinda like a payment in lieu of taxes. Because the city has a, a large amount of real estate up there, not only this area, but everything else that is tax exempt. And, and we provide fire coverage up there. And also, we are a, a unmutually aid contract with the city fire department, which in most years means that we benefit more from the city, but, you know, we are mutually aided in the city on that. So I would just explain those things. I would, I, from that standpoint, I'd like to see that stay in the general fund. Because I, I think it's because of the, the concept of the payment in lieu of taxes being that that is kind of a, a perpetual kind of a thing, instead of something that could go away if the 1% goes away.
It sounds, you'll have to explain that to me again sometime.
Then I run around that circle.
I, I didn't, it was too convoluted. Like, I gotta, but I don't wanna take your time tonight.
I'm a convoluted guy.
No, you're not, I just, I just want you to explain it to me later.
Go ahead, can you?
If you, when we get to this next page, if we're done with the other, I could even use clarity on understanding the difference between F, G, and H.
Sure thing. If it pleases the council, why don't I go ahead and go through this other portion first? And then, Councilwoman Humphrey, I could certainly answer that question, okay?
That's all right, thanks.
That's all right. A couple of the other assumptions that lead to what you see by way of staff recommendation in column, uh, column C, or the second C, if you will. I've mentioned that we're trying to relieve the burden on the general fund as much as possible, and so we are talking about cost shifting. I'm also talking about trying to streamline in a number of ways the double dipping that takes place throughout the agency's relationship with the city. I would also suggest that I don't think we're in a position to take on new agencies and new applications and new relationships, if you will. Except when it comes to the, the portion of the recommendation spectrum here that I'm trying to offer that would deal with what I like to call orphanized applications for funding. And let me tell you what I mean. I am suggesting that we no longer do pass-through relationships with other agencies. And the reason I'm suggesting that is because I think that works against the value that you committed to me, or that you expressed commitment to anyway, a number of months ago of wanting tighter stewardship and tighter accountability from these agencies that receive city funding. If indeed we're passing these funds, the same exact funds through pass-through agencies, I can't be assured that I can deliver that same sort of accountability through those other agencies and from those other agencies, if you will, as well as I can with regard to agencies that receive funding directly from the city of Casper. And oh, by the way, I think we will save money in the process. Because A, we're streamlining the funds that are given to agencies that receive one, two, or three ways through the city. And, and we're tightening up the administrative costs that are often the case to be required from the city of Casper to perform the function that they do on our behalf. So we're eliminating that redundancy as well and saving money. So the two agencies that I'm aware of that fall into that category are certainly the Community Action Partnership and Poverty Resistance. I'm recommending as a part of the spreadsheet you see here in front of you tonight, that they no longer receive that type of funding and/or commitment from the city of Casper to act on our behalf in distributing dollars. Now, if you'll look at your page, we have a portion that is highlighted in darkish pink, maybe it's effusia, that would indicate who those orphanized entities are. Because if indeed our relationship goes- Because if indeed our relationship goes away with CAP, for example, they are not going to have anywhere to go for funding. And so it would make sense to me that you at least consider those agencies and allow us the opportunity to reach out to them and say, hey, you may want to come forward to the City of Casper with a request in mind, so that if indeed they are in desperate need of funds and needing to move forward, or I should say, be at risk of moving forward without the relationship with CAP anymore for city funds, then I would suspect you'd want to talk to them at least or see what their materials are and that kind of thing.
Carter, would that be a, what department would that come out of, those requests? Would it just come out of when somebody would come in and say, like, if they wanted, Habitat Humanity wanted to come in and make that request for those council contract funds, would they just come to the city manager's office? Or what were you looking at trying to have that request come through?
Mr. Mayor, that is a perfect segue into the next recommendation that I would have for you this evening. They would come to the city manager's office for application. However, they would come forward asking funding through not the General Fund any further. I'm recommending that we move these cost burdens over to 1%. You already have a pretty strong commitment through 1% to give funds to outside agencies, and in fact, you do so in the amount of just about $2 million, if I remember from my previous spreadsheet that we put together for you. And so in order to relieve the burden on the General Fund, which you have done in the past, this is not a historically unprecedented means of funding agencies outside the organization, obviously. Moving funds into the General Fund, however, is a relatively new phenomenon that has only taken place in the last couple of years. And so I'm proposing that we move this burden to the 1% fund. I'm also indicating to you that the residual funds in 1% 15, for example, are available to accommodate that burden. However, it wouldn't be a burden borne by the General Fund anymore if you adopt the recommendations that we have for you this evening.
Dallas.
So this helps you balance the budget, is what it really does, isn't it?
On the General Fund side?
Yes.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Does it put a...
Mr. Mayor Hopkins here.
Hold on one second. Dallas has the floor.
Does it, what does it put a strain on?
Mr. Mayor, Councilman, it provides about...
Did you talk to the main?
Oh, no. Dallas has the floor. Hold on one sec.
Yeah, no problem.
Thank you. I'll get you next.
It provides about a year-over-year savings of the neighborhood of $300,000 for the General Fund. And so that allows us to obviously divert those dollars to other operational needs throughout the General Fund.
Does it, does it put, where is it putting the strain?
Yeah. Mr. Mayor, Councilman Johnson's correct. That would shift the burden to 1%.
Okay. Thank you.
You bet.
Go ahead, Bob.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, I've been involved in council for a few years, and a long time before that, on One-Sent Committees. And the one thing that the City of Casper has done is we have published a list of what we want done on One-Sent Committees and with One-Sent Funds. And it's been a very strong commitment on the part of the council, and quite honestly, on the part of the county, that we said, we will put this list of priorities together, and this is what we're going to do. And in fact, I think we need to continue to down those lines if we want to have the additional 1% tax passed. And we have, we have towed the line for 15, 15 One-Sents. And it's extremely important that we continue to fund with those One-Sents what we said we're going to do. And I support what the manager wants to do. If it's a One-Sent, if it's a One-Sent project, it needs to be done by the One-Sent, because that's what we told our folks in Casper we're going to do. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Hopkins over.
Chris.
When we look at the purple ones, and it says could use council contract funds, the contracts we're talking about would be CAP and then Poverty Resistance, so that...
Correct. That's exactly right. Exactly right. And so, Mr. Mayor, to reiterate my point that I made earlier, we do think that there is a residual balance in 1% from projects that have been completed and didn't use all the funds from the CAP funds that you just identified and so forth that would otherwise be committed to absorb even the full burden of what it is that you're, you know, would potentially award of these purple funds, these pink funds, moving forward if we can shift that burden.
Mr. Mayor.
Kenny, did I miss you? I'm sorry.
It's okay. Did we give any thought to if an agency has over a year of operational funds and savings that maybe we reduce their funding a little bit? Because do we have a year of funds for the city?
Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman, no, we do not. And I do think that that speaks directly to need kinds of issues if indeed we have agencies that have 12 months or more worth of funding sitting in abeyance. Now, I am sure that each agency would tell you that has that situation, that they shouldn't be penalized, if you will, for being wise stewards with the dollars that they've been given. But I would also indicate that need is a critical element, I think, with regard to evaluating how agencies rise or fall in their priority for city funds, particularly in the environment of those funds tightening up and becoming reduced to some degree.
Any other questions, comments?
Can I run through a couple real quick, smaller recommendations that this would imply?
Absolutely.
We are recommending that the Parkway Trails Trust be reduced by the General Fund commitment of $50,000. They get a substantial amount of 1% dollars from the city through a different program, mind you, but definitely from the city. And in years past, they have used those funds to supplement their operational needs versus getting additional funds from the General Fund to supplement their operational needs. And so that obviously brings $50,000 worth of relief to our General Fund and requires them to look towards some of those other funds that they get from the city to supplement what they do. And so to give you a kind of an orientation opportunity with regard to the larger spreadsheet that you have in front of you, if you were to look at that entry in our larger spreadsheet, let's see, that would be on page two, and it would be item entry number 34, Platinum Trails Trust. You can see that they get a total 1% 15 allocation of just over $767,000, which equates to about $170,000 a year, moving to the right on that spreadsheet. They also get, of course, the General Fund funding of $50,000 that I'm pointing to directly right now, which means that column G would suggest that their total commitment of funding is actually $220,000 of funding. They don't receive pass-through funding, which item H would attempt to total for you as well. However, they also get in-kind funding from the city by way of maintenance services and so forth for the trails that they will receive, which means that their total funding for fiscal year 18 is in the neighborhood of $228,741. And so that's the total that I'm suggesting they could find their operational support from out of minus the $50,000, if you agree to what we're recommending. That's an orientation entry there to kind of give you a feel for how the spreadsheet works. And unfortunately, Councilwoman, would have dealt with your question.
I'm sorry.
I apologize for that timing of how G and F were...
You're not going to get any...
I'm sorry about that.
Couldn't hold it any longer.
My apologies. We'll get another opportunity home if you'd like. Another similar recommendation is with regard to the funding we provide for the UW Extension Office in about $25,000. That is a weed and pest fund program, which also supplements the General Fund in our organization. I'm proposing that that $25,000 be shifted to the 1% fund, thereby relieving the General Fund of that particular burden, albeit indirectly. I know that in times past, there has been some talk of eliminating that commitment entirely, and council's been reluctant to do that. If council wanted to take on that option, I would support you in that regard, but I don't know that you have that level of desire, if you will. It's a unique and interesting relationship. That individual, and I might get this wrong, so if anybody can help me here, is not employed by the city. They are employed by UW, if I remember correctly, and they are housed in a county facility. And we provide a part of her salary. And so, again, while I'm not recommending that that program be discontinued, even though I would support that, I am suggesting that that be moved to the 1% fund and continued in that regard, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah. Go ahead, Chris.
And what do we get from this position?
Great question. The, Mr. Mayor, those services are along the lines of providing community information pursuant to tree care, pursuant to gardening care, soil care, and those kinds of things that you would get from a horticulturist, if you will. And I think is a pretty popular program in our community. Did I miss anything, Andrew, in that regard?
No.
Okay.
Information? Information only? Just provide information?
Andrew, can I direct that to Andrew, please?
Go ahead, Andrew.
Your Honor, Council, my understanding is you should actually make council calls and take a look at your trees and your plants and your soil conditions.
And do you know how popular, how often it's used?
We looked at terminating that contract a couple of years ago. I don't know if it ever reached council level, but the master gardeners and all their supporters were adamantly opposed to it.
They felt it was effective, Andrew.
They thought that position was very effective.
These officers, trees.
Mr. Mayor, I think I heard the other part of the question, or I think, what type of services like this around the state? And I think this is the only relationship that exists anymore of this nature.
Go ahead, Chris.
This is nice to have. I don't think it falls in our priorities, and I'd like to explore removing the funding.
And not even, even if it moved over to the One-Sent.
Correct.
Just moved it completely. Go ahead, Mike.
Mr. Mayor, I've got a little bit broader question here. I've always felt pretty strongly that ongoing, every-year kind of needs, it's dangerous to fund those with an optional tax. How does what you're recommending with reference to these things that you're saying to take out of the General Fund, put into 1%, how does that fit, in your opinion, with the idea that I just brought up?
Mr. Mayor, great question, and I appreciate you asking that. My goal for the operations of the city organization is that we do not depend on one-time revenue for operations of the city government. And so that's why you will hear my conversation with regard to direct distribution dollars, because those are, in fact, one-time dollars from the state that fortunately the state has supported over the years since its inception, albeit always under the caveat of you may not get this next year or next budget year or whatever. So be aware of that kind of a thing. And we have a dependency in that regard for General Fund funding. The reason that I am proposing that these funds be moved out of the, these programs be moved out of the General Fund and into the 1% Fund is it contributes to the sustainability that I'm real concerned about in terms of our General Fund and the operations that we fund through the General Fund, police, parks, fire, and so on, streets, et cetera. With regard to the agencies that they, you know, already use city dollars for to subsidize their operations, I'm proposing that they not be at the cost of General Fund money. Because, again, General Fund money is our most vulnerable source of revenue right now and precarious. 1% on the other hand, for agencies that are outside of the organization, are, many would argue, our obligation to provide for with regard to the needs and services that our community has, but they are not statutorily mandated to provide for, and in my opinion, should not be provided for in the General Fund that we have, given our statutory obligation to provide the services that we have an obligation to provide.
So what I'm hearing you say is that you think that these shifts that you're proposing basically supports the position that I said, that ongoing obligations, ongoing operations, not fund them by optional taxes, but put all these other things into that category. Is that what, am I understanding you correctly?
Mr. Mayor, Councilman, that's exactly what I'm saying.
Okay.
I think it supports the effort of sustainability for the city's operations, albeit does bring into question the survivability of outside agencies' sustainability.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay. Thanks.
Yeah.
I want to go back real quick to Chris's proposal about that. Is that something that the council would entertain? Go ahead, Kenny.
No, no. Finish. I was just going to say I have one more comment, but finish.
So is that something people would want to move forward? Do you want information on that now, or do you want us to come back to it?
Oh, Mr. Mayor, getting enough information on that would be very helpful, because what we would do is we would consult that contract and determine what it is that we would need to do in order to end that relationship and the formal procedures necessary to do so.
Mr. Mayor Hopkins here.
Yeah, go ahead, Bob.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Literally, since we started the One-Sent Tax, going back almost 40 years now, the City of Casper has maintained the position that we do not pay ongoing expenses out of One-Sent. And therefore, based on, you know, what's transpired over the years, it's, we've changed, but the bottom line is, when we start paying wages out of One-Sent, it's probably not a good idea. We have always held the position, long before I was ever on council, going back to the days of my friend Jack, when he was on council. We held the position that we would use One-Sent monies to rebuild capital facilities, but never use it for operating expenses. And therefore, I support what the city manager is saying, that we need to back away from this. We need to unload the General Fund, if you will, from anything that is ongoing expense. That way, we don't know that we load up the next guys that have to vote for the One-Sent Tax. Thank you. That's it.
So can we give the, Carter, direction on that with the UW Extension?
I concur with Carter's direction.
Well, he needs our direction.
He needs our direction, Bob, whether we want to cut that 25 from UW Extension.
Or move it to...
Or move it to 1%. I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Go ahead, Kenny.
So I guess I would be comfortable with it moving to 1%.
I want to move to 1%.
But it needs to be compared to what the citizens' priorities were, kind of their survey lists that they gave us. But, so I'm totally behind what you're doing. Some, like, over the last 12 years that I've been here, these agencies didn't always used to be coming out of the General Fund. It was somebody talked us into getting them into the General Fund, so they had guaranteed funding, but it gives them an advantage over all the other social service agencies. So I'm cool with taking every single one of them out. General Fund should just be for city, city operations like streets, police, fire, yeah, and put every single one on... and put every single one on 1 cent or, I mean, I think they should all have to compete for the same bottom line.
I have a comment.
Mr. Mayor, go ahead.
And I think that includes the other, the other issue that I've been talking about for months. I like this conversation, but I think it has to apply, and I'm certainly not talking about defunding anyone. I'm talking about doing exactly what you're saying, which is shifting how this money is paid, where we, the council, take a look at it every year and see if we have enough in our piggy bank, and how much, and how much they need. But it's always avoided. Everybody avoids talking about CADA, and yet, what I hear you say you're proposing with these other agencies is exactly what I want you to do with CADA. Am I right?
Well, Mr. Mayor, Councilman, you will be pleased to know that we will have that conversation, particularly about CADA, coming up in April, wherein council gets to give very specific direction about how you'd like the nature of that funding to be managed. I certainly agree that the same conversation should be had about all of our relationships that are at that plane, which are through the Joint Powers Board agreements that we have that govern and manage those relations, those kinds of relationships. So if it would please the council, we can certainly add the County Health Department to that agenda and have them come in and talk to the council very specifically, because not only are we talking about a joint powers board agreement that is a unique element to these kinds of relationships, it's also a significant amount of money akin to what we give to CADA.
And I agree with exactly what you've just said, but the main principle is, I believe we're entrusted by law to manage our own money, and we're turning it over to boards and other entities to manage our money, and I don't, I just think we have to stop doing that. We have to manage our own money, based upon what the law tells us as a council we should be doing with our priorities. We have a certain priority list. If people haven't read those statutes on what cities do based upon this kind of management system, we need to buff up on that, because I think we're not really applying strictly what the law requires of us, especially in how we manage our money.
This is exactly what you're fixing, though, in a sense, right?
Exactly, and I like the conversation.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, Mike.
I would just offer a couple of thoughts here, and Carter, correct me if I'm wrong about this, but I think that the County Health Department provides a lot of services in the city that the city does not otherwise have or duplicate. You know, I'm thinking about restaurant inspections, all the public health kind of thing. So I think that that is an ongoing, year-to-year obligation that the city really needs to do, either by having a city health department, or by, you know, helping with the county thing in order for it to be properly and adequately done. I would also advocate that, with reference to Casper Mountain Fire Department, that uniquely stands in a different position from all of these other things that you, all these other items that you're talking about. And in general, I totally support, you know, what you're proposing to do with all these other items, with those two exceptions, because I think that the County Health Department is something that is kind of an ongoing, that needs not going to go away. And the, like I was saying earlier, the payment and lieu tax concept about the assisting fire district stands out in a unique position as well.
Mr. Mayor, if I?
Down low, please, go right ahead.
Councilman, I appreciate your observations, and I think we are hitting on some very important points that need discussion, and maybe haven't even been discussed in quite some time. I, the relationship with the Casper Mountain Fire District, I think, is a good symbiotic relationship. However, the only, the only adjustment that I would recommend considering for this body is, is it possible that we can be billed for services that they render versus offering simply a subsidy to their operational need on an annual basis? So that indeed, we say, hey, tell us what you do for us, invoice us accordingly, and we set an established not-to-exceed number of, say, $7,500 versus simply paying it out year after year after year. That's the only twist that I would offer.
And that's kind of been done in the sense that, in general, we've, I think, always reported to the city that, well, okay, you know, this year we purchased, you know, we, for quite a few years, we made payments on one of the trucks that we had on contract for purchase. That's where that money went over here. At different times, it's gone for very specific items of equipment. I think that, you know, that kind of report is probably a completely reasonable thing for the city to ask for, but, yeah.
I like the words you're using. I'm going to take those, Mr. Manager, and use them in these other areas where I think this should apply across the board, where we give people large sums of money. I'm going to remember them word for word, believe me, I can remember those things, word for word.
I bet you can. Anything else? Yeah, Chris.
I know we'll have time to talk about this more, but I just wonder about, you know, $7,500 for the Casper Mountain Fire District. I don't know that it wouldn't take very long for that to go through the roof on a big incident. So the $7,500 might be a real reasonable contribution.
Good point.
We like the Casper Mountain Fire.
That's because we're such great guys. Now that they've gotten rid of that old guy that used to be the chief for a long time.
Carter, this is great. I support it completely.
Thank you, thank you. I appreciate it. Thanks for the conversation, it's very, very helpful.
Let me take just a five-minute break here before we move into budget review for the utility rates.
Yeah.
Five minutes.
I have to figure out.
Oh, I'm sure nobody's even really buying it. It's up there. Yeah.
No, I, I was just trying to understand the difference between the, because it makes it look like. In the word, I stand. I don't think that's. I would doubt this. Direct plus pass through. In addition, they give $267,000. So. This is, this is direct plus pass through. So they give pass through, this is what means to pass through. This is the allocation, this is how much they keep to themselves. So directly, we pay them $214,000. When you add, just the pass through. I don't want, I thought this was kind of, you know, like another. Yeah. So, so it's kind of, it gets to be kind of funky, but it's kind of showing how it is. Because it is, that, some looks the same, but the yellows, the greens. And then, this is all basically the senior stuff. This is just FY, this is FY 18, where we are. This is the total allocation, how much they give this year, how much cap they value, where they're saying they're giving to, and poverty resistance, where they're saying they're giving it. So for, like the food bank resources, they give cap money, and poverty resistance, they, yeah, poverty resistance, it moves. So it's pass through, pass through, and then you, it starts to become. And so this will be our community information process. Well, and we add, next year, do you see? Who's getting? And that's, this is all kind of. All right, okay. Going to.
I said, no permit.
Someone that's, that's good. We'll stick to. Yeah, let's, we lost, we lost the way of this. We're just, we're, 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 If you see the blue line operating at or above the green line, then I'm here to tell you that that's ideal operating condition for that fund. Conversely, as I've already mentioned, less than ideal would be a trend going this way through reserves and pointing toward the, the red line, the disaster line, okay? Does that make sense? The water fund here indicates a pretty healthy balance of activity. You've got your behavioral curve in the blue line, operating largely above ideal operating condition, and that is great for an enterprise fund. However, as your sheet would indicate, and if we could move up a little time, that does not happen simply by virtue of luck or, you know, not paying attention to what's going on. We are suggesting that for the water fund, in order to maintain activity in the ideal operating condition, that we would suggest a two percent increase in your water rates, all right? Now, with each of these funds, you're going to see that there are factors that influence the behavior of your blue line. Some of those factors are what you see here, you know, by way of looking at, um, uh, expenses, of course, looking at your reserve requirement and, uh, and percent, perhaps what role one percent could have in, in the fund, whatever the fund may be. As you can see for the water fund, we are actually proposing that a lot of the repairs that have been burdened, or that I should say have been supported by the water rates over the past several years, we're hoping that you and the community will see the benefit of investing one percent dollars into the water fund in this case, uh, moving forward. An interesting note, the rate at which the city has been replacing water infrastructure without the infusion of one percent dollars, at least to this degree, as you can see, we do have some commitment of one percent dollars that you've already supported and approved, allows you to replace your water system once every two hundred years.
At this rate, we're going?
At the rate that we're suggesting. If you were to not support an infusion of one percent dollars and/or the community were to say, "No, it's not our priority," then you quickly jump to four hundred years or more. And so in my estimation, that does not speak well in terms of a rate of replacement to avoiding water breaks and service disruptions and those kinds of things. If your pace is such that you have to wait four hundred years before it actually gets replaced in its entirety and avoid water breaks entirely and that kind of thing. Obviously, you know, that, that is used as a reference purpose. I, I don't anticipate that the water breaks that we have right now are such that we're the worst in the state, we're the worst in our intermountain west region or whatever. But as a frame of reference, by picking up the investment to this degree, you do reduce the amount of, uh, replacement for the system by nearly double, okay? So that's a major piece of, of what we're proposing. An additional piece that influences what you see by way of the, uh, the rate that we're suggesting and maintaining, uh, an ideal operating condition if we can, is that of what we pay for the water that we buy from the regional system. The regional system did increase our rate to buy water from them by seven percent, right? And so when you consider that large of an expense, which is in the neighborhood of six or so million dollars every year, when you get that kind of a percentage increase relative to the size of this budget overall, it has an impact. It doesn't have enough of an impact that would require us to raise our rates more than this, but it does have an impact. And so it does provide downward pressure on the blue line if we aren't diligent with regard to responding, responding in kind to some degree. And that is what we're proposing for the water fund.
What does that do to your water bill?
It raises, um, for the average residential customer, assuming a sort of an average consumption rate of about eighty-nine cents a month. Now, for illustrative purposes, Tom, can we change this two percent to, say, zero percent and see what it does to our behavioral curve? If we could then shift down to look at the behavioral curve, we should do that. Because then, then you get a, a real clean, real-time perspective of what that type of policy decision does to, uh, to the fund.
Carter, when was the last time we raised the rates? Do we know?
Evidently, we did not raise and raise, at least with regard to fiscal year eighteen.
I remember that.
Pursuant to our information. Can y'all say otherwise?
I can't remember the last time.
Your Honor, counsel, previously councils allocated rate increases two years, so you didn't see a rate increase. Well, you, you would have seen us come in November of... The last time you saw rate increases was November of twenty fifteen, I believe. And that set two-year rate increases, and I think for water was five percent.
About three and a half.
Three and a half percent per year.
Gotcha. As you can see, if, if we adopted a, um, an approach of not raising rates for the next three or four years, our trajectory responds pretty quickly over the next two or three years, going in a, in a direction that is less than optimal. Now, again, keep in mind, this is what we're projecting by way of, um, capital and expense behavior over the next several years. This is what we have observed by way of expense and capital behavior, at least so far in, in eighteen, and what we think we need to do, uh, in nineteen for expenses and, uh, capital. So, Tom, conversely, if we could just keep the other rate increases in place and drop the one, you know, this year's rate to zero, um, you can get a feel of what passing for this year alone does to the water fund. Because I think we had seven twenty... Oh, yeah, there we go, okay. The change is not as abrupt if we look at one percent in ensuing years and laying off this year, and, and absolutely that is a policy call you make, a level of comfort you determine with regard to our, um, expected purchasing falling into that margin of, of buffer that we described earlier. I'm here to tell you, this is a really bad, um, prospectus over the next couple of years either, because even though you're not up here, you're certainly not jumping into reserves in the next year or the next two years. But I would say keeping an eye on this pattern is important and certainly critical for you to be mindful of. So what is your pleasure with the water fund?
Keep the blue line above the red line.
Well, it looks like we have a mission accomplished.
I'm okay, I'm okay with going with your, with your recommendations. How's everybody else feel?
Do we want to hear what the public thinks first?
Do you let them tell you how to run your business?
No, but you always like to hear what they'd say. I do it.
Hold on a second, Dallas. Chris?
Well, we haven't had a rate increase in three years. If we don't, then we drive everything years from now to where the rate increase is going to be three times as much as the two percent right now. Obviously, things increasing cost, so do it reasonably and, and every, every year as needed instead of one huge jump that really hurts people. I think that we should go with this.
Dallas?
Mr. Manager, I agree with you. I'd just like to hear what our public constituents say. Sometimes they have really good ideas, and so it isn't that I want to hold you up or do anything of that nature.
Sure.
But I'm always interested in what the constituents say. I, I hold that in a very high priority for myself.
Mr. Mayor, can I respond?
Absolutely.
Counselman, you're going to be happy then. I'm, I'm pleased to report that with regard to the adoption of the ordinances that would be needed to make these recommendations occur, I would suggest that we do a public hearing in concert with the first reading at least, that would allow for the public to provide their input and give their...
I think that's a superb idea.
Okay.
I'm in favor of public hearings, I'm in favor of the public coming down here and telling me what they think.
Good point. Well, I, I would suggest...
I can only speak for myself, that's how I feel.
Okay, please, go ahead.
Your Honor, counsel, we have historically adopted rates by resolution. If only caveat to the three readings required by our ordinance.
Which doesn't mean we can't have a public hearing.
We can always have public...
Yeah, right, exactly. So we do just adopt by ordinance or by resolution? I've seen it differently.
I would say, though, I think Chris made an excellent point that, you know, we haven't done a, a rate, um, for three years and then a rate adjustment, and then incremental, incrementally doing that and adding it so that it doesn't feel like, you know, we have to, to balance that we have to do a ten percent.
Kind of a balloon thing.
Then we get, then we get gouged. I think this is a smart and pragmatic approach to how to, how to raise those rates and for us to make sure we stay ahead of the curve, so I think that's a good idea.
Well, I appreciate that. And if, unless there's other questions, I can move you on to another fund. Um, and I recognize that, please, go ahead.
Except for, do you want this percent to be in zero, right, and not the one percent? I didn't know if you wanted the effect of not having one percent in there, or you wanted to show the effect of just having this...
Oh, no, I was talking about the percentage.
Okay, all right.
Particularly. Yeah, so we did it right, yeah. I want you to know, Tom and I have been perfecting this instrument and this tool for years now, but it really didn't get perfect until I had the recommendation of these fine people, Andrew and Bruce and Cindy, who suggested a, a tweet to our model that made it really just hum. So, um, while Tom and I have been working on this, it wasn't made ideal until we got these guys involved. And I, and I appreciate the work, by the way, that they have taken in putting all this together, because it's, it's, when, when you're moving into a new model, it's hard the first year, and these guys made it look easy, so... Let's move to sewer. The sewer fund, which I can't remember the order in your booklet, but what I am talking about sewer, is it next? Okay, good. This is tough material. With regard to the sewer fund, um, council has spent, uh, a number of capital expenses to, to get us to where we're at here, which were needed and important and, and everything else. And, and as you can see, with regard to what we're proposing, um, we are allowing, obviously, a, a dissension, if you will, towards more of an ideal operating condition, uh, wherein operating up here to me would be superfluous, uh, with regard to what we'd be charging our citizens and everything else. So hovering around here, I think, is ideal, and sometimes council may even be comfortable hovering in here. And sometimes, depending on our agenda capital-wise, coming down here may not be inappropriate either, which you'll have the opportunity to address here in a few minutes. But the sewer fund here is driven in large part by a lot of those capital needs that we've talked about in recent months pertaining to the wastewater treatment plant. Now, some of you who have taken the tour out there have gotten a real up-close, uh, review of what some of those capital needs are. And so we have tried to, in our best way possible, accommodate for those repairs that have immediacy in the prospectus pertaining to what you see in the behavior of the fund in this blue curve. So please know that a lot of those repairs that have immediacy, we have built into this model over a number of years, not all in one year, but certainly in a way that we think is manageable and doesn't require an, uh, and, you know, overwhelming rate increase to sustain. By way of performance commentary, if we could switch up a little bit, let's talk about the role that one percent could have in the sewer fund. Right now, uh, the sewer fund has really no involvement of one percent. However, what we're proposing for future years, starting in fiscal year twenty, when sixteen is in place, we are suggesting that an additional five hundred thousand be injected into the sewer fund in order to be more on pace with regard to repairs and replacements that are needed in our collection system. Now, again, for reference, we are anticipating that by adding five hundred thousand dollars a year, which would make the total capital program be in the neighborhood of a million in the collection side of things, we would then be able to replace our treatment, not treatment, but collection system every three hundred years, okay? So conversely, if we don't do this, then of course our rate of replacement doubles and jumps to somewhere in the neighborhood of five hundred, six hundred years. Again, just a point of reference, I realize what our limitations are and what it is that we, uh, we, we replace that and that kind of thing as being realistic. But I think at the rate of replacement that we're looking at with this kind of infusion, it's not overly aggressive or inappropriately ambitious or anything like that. So I would ask you to consider that and, of course, weigh that against what the public tells you with regard to the use of one percent funds.
Mike Carter-Dallas has a comment.
Please, yes, sir.
This is one where the public could see this. You know, when I got my tour of this place, I saw, I saw what we needed to do out there, and it's serious business. So the public, uh, I'd say anybody who wants to go out there and take a little tour and have Mrs., is it Lockwood?
Mm-hmm.
Take them around, they will see why this one needs to be done without any question.
One of the things that we were not able to project all that well into the capital agenda for this particular fund is with regard to the major overhaul that we're going to need on the plant. Now, I've, I've mentioned that we've got immediacy concerns and we tried to deal with those, but that twenty-five million dollar orangutan that we need to invest into that plant within the next seven years is not addressed with the model that you're seeing here tonight. So next year, this time next year, Andrew and I will present a plan that will identify, hopefully, funding measures and, you know, kind of a construction timeframe, if you will, that would get us to the point to where when that seven-year time clock hits, we will be ready and repaired and rehabilitated and everything from a plant perspective. But you should know that even at this rate of proposal for rates, we are still not dealing with that twenty-five million dollar huge commitment that we need to address, okay? As it relates to the recommendation for rates, you can see that the average residential customer, assuming an average rate of sewage consumption a year, can anticipate a dollar thirty a month if, in fact, you accept this recommendation. Now, pursuant to what we did in the last one, Tom, if you can just... Now pursuant to what we did in the last one, Tom, if you can just change this entry to zero, that's six to zero. The fund responds much more aggressively and I'll tell you, that's because of the aggressive capital program we need to maintain to deal with the immediacy concerns that we have on the plant. Another part of that, too, that we could, you know, demonstrate as well is if we took that $500,000 commitment of 1% funds potentially out of here, you would see an even more marked declination of that line, assuming that we kept up with a similar capital agenda. And obviously, that is, I don't even like look at it. That's ugly, ugly. But that would obviously speak to the need of either a higher rate increase or less of a capital agenda to balance that blue curve out.
But just move that red line down to the bottom and think.
I hadn't thought of that approach, yeah. So let's restore that. And wait a minute, so we put the capital back in place, right? Okay. For discussion purposes, let's put the rate back to zero for the one year, just right here, that we're at, or 19. Yeah, 19. Keep in mind that we crossed into reserves in '21 at the rate that we're proposing. It is amazing that in one year of punting a rate increase, you know, it has this kind of effect, but I can tell you that, you know, moving from here to here in some cities may be appropriate and I'm relying upon your guidance and insight to determine whether or not you think that's appropriate. But you'll notice, we're not moving into reserves in '20 and so obviously, we still have the opportunity to work with the numbers to keep us around the ideal operating condition. But in similar fashion, I'd ask you what your direction is for the sewer fund.
Go ahead, Dallas.
I think it's helpful for the city to know how old that equipment is.
Right.
Am I right? It was built in 1958, somewhere in there?
Is that right?
The original, Mr. Mayor, the council, the original plant was built in 1958, '59, with upgrades in '70, major upgrade in '83, '86, another upgrade in 2006.
So it's been around a while and if people want to go out and see, just take a couple glances around there, they know this has to be done. I think our public just needs to know certain ages and what really needs to be repaired and how we've kept this old car running throughout the years. We're still driving a 1958 Chevy and we're just putting new parts in it.
I'm comfortable with your recommendations.
Okay, well, thank you. Let's go ahead and move to refuse collection first. That's a pretty dynamic that you probably are all familiar with. Refuge collection is the means by which we run sanitation throughout the community. And as you all probably know, we have both residential customers and we have commercial customers. And they pay into, with the fees that they pay on a monthly basis, to the activity of this fund. Okay? The connection, though, that you need to be aware of, that we're gonna illustrate here in a minute, is the relationship that this fund has with your bail fill fund. And those are managed, of course, largely by tipping fees and we'll get into that here in a second, because the two, they work together, okay? In regards to some of the impacts that we're gonna see here in a second, we are proposing that, let's see, that we look at a 5% increase for fiscal year '19. As you can see here, we have not and we are not proposing use of 1% funds in this particular fund. And I will tell you that the improvements that are out there and the equipment that's needed and so forth have historically been borne by either proceeds from this rate or grants that we've, and/or grants that we've gotten and those kinds of things on the bail fill side in particular. But what we're suggesting is that for the current, I should say, average residential customer, this impact is about 76 cents. Let's go ahead and switch to bail fill, because we do have some pretty big implications with regard to the bail fill that influences the number you just see here. Now, this is a checkmark that does not represent something good. Okay? This particular checkmark, as you can see, operates beneath the black line, which would mean we're operating within the reserve category of this fund's existence. Okay? Now, I've seen this kind of behavior before and I've certainly seen it in such a way that it's anticipated or expected, given the dynamics that would influence this behavior. With regard to the bail fill, we've got a number of things happening. The bail fill includes the operation and management of land bills. And as you know, land bills are an expensive facility to maintain. It just so happens that in the next two years, we not only have a new land bill that we're hoping to open, which is in the neighborhood of, correct me if I'm wrong, a city of just over one, almost $2 million, right? In concert with that, typically, you've gotta close the old land bill, right? And the state has very specific obligations that you need to meet in order to appropriately close a land bill. Now, while we do have some flexibility with regard to how that closure takes place, which obviously will impact this behavior of the fund, we're still talking another million dollars to make that happen, either in year one, year two, or year three. I don't know how much further we can go, but that's probably the extent of the flexibility that we have, I would guess. Because, again, we've got real tight requirements that the DEQ expects of us. The other side of this that we have that influences this is with regard to the bail fill expansion that you all approved back in, was it April, for us to go out to bid for? Last year?
Well, I don't know that we ever went out to bid last year.
The initial design was approved, I think, back in November.
November of 2016.
Up 2016.
Okay, okay. And so you're gonna entertain a bid proposal from what we have found to be the apparent low bidder here next week, right? Uh, two weeks, April, April 3rd, yeah, it's April 3rd. Again, which influences how this curve acts, but we're all, we're talking capital here and that's what we're dealing with in a very capital-intensive fund with regard to the projects we have on our very near horizon. If we can move up here. What we're proposing for our tipping fee, now I remind you, our tipping fee is what every customer to the bail fill pays. The City of Casper pays it through the refuse collection fund, because we are the biggest user of the bail fill. Other communities that come to our bail fill pay it. Our commercial tippers, our commercial collectors, they pay it. The good news that we have with regard to the tipping fee that we are proposing here is that this tipping fee is the lowest in the state with regard to other districts and municipalities that have land bills. I'm not using that as a justification, I'm using that as a point of reference, because in the worst-case scenario with regard to what you could see by way of trying to keep up with capital and so forth, would still put us in a range that is incredibly competitive with regard to other tipping fees that we see around the state. Again, point of reference only, not a justification. Justification that I would use is if indeed we want to move forward with the capital replacements that we have coming forward, i.e. the landfill expansion enclosures that we gotta deal with, as well as the bail fill expansion that is, in my estimation, sorely needed as well, I would use that as our justification for increasing our conglomerated rate for tipping fees in the neighborhood of 2%, which increases our tipping fee from 47 even to 47.94 per ton.
Chris.
So this cost right here, that's what I pay when I actually go to the landfill and then refuse collection is what's on my city bill for water. So these won't all be on one bill, but if I end up with a ton of garbage to drop, it's gonna cost me 47.94.
That's exactly right.
Okay.
That's exactly right. Conversely, on the refuse collection side, if we go back to that real quickly, Tom, tipping fees is a major influencer with regard to the rates we pay as citizens for refuse collection. We're suggesting that that impact would be 76 cents a month. So the rate that you would pay in your description would be impacted by 76 cents and that rate is incredibly competitive as well. Point of reference, not a justification, 1520 and 1596, in my opinion, having seen firsthand solid waste collection rates around the state is extremely competitive. And that's frankly, what's driving a number of other municipalities and counties and districts and so forth to come here, to dump their solid waste, which helps us keep our rates low. And that's a good thing. It's a great relationship that Cindy has pioneered over the last several years. Great relationship.
Kenny, Chris has a follow-up.
I just wanted, so, all this is a package. My bill from the city looks like it's just under three bucks more than I proposed and I go to the dump and I actually have a ton of trash and not just the ticket and I have to come paying just under a buck extra for us to stay out of debt.
And in some cases, operating more in the ideal operating condition, like for example, the water fund.
I think it's a good trick.
Kenny.
What's the thought behind the proposed increases by 3.1? I guess when I'm working on my budget at work, it's almost easier for me just to plan on a consistent 3% or 4% than to go up and down like that.
I think you bring up a really interesting question, Mr. Mayor, if I may. Each year is gonna have different impacts that we have to address. Some years are gonna be much more aggressive from a capital standpoint, some years are gonna be less aggressive. Some years we're gonna have more growth from a network expansion, some years we're not. And all of those are impacts that we try to calculate and project with regard to what we're facing, not only for now, but in years to come. So what you're seeing that is, in particular with regard to refuse collection, I think we're read, yeah, we're gonna be feeling the burden, in some cases, of capital worse than others. And so to simplify the question a little bit, that's what I would suggest, at least about this particular fund. And a similar formula would be said for what you see in other rates and other suggested increases or not increases, as it were, over the next several years. Is that fair, Cindy? Did I capture that? Okay.
Any other questions? Chuck, go on then.
Thank you. I want you to know, we are trying to minimize as much as possible rate increases, but being very aware of our capital needs over time and that's what we're trying to be prepared for. Thank you, everyone.
I'll keep my busted bow.
Do you want your whistle to air here on next?
Yeah, yeah.
Strategic Plan Review.
Thank you and thank you, everybody.
Thank you. And thank Tom, even though he gave lots of kudos to us about improving this, he's awesome.
One of the best hires ever. So thank you, Tom, for all your help on this.
I feel like it'd be remiss, if I may, Mr. Mayor, that agency funding effort was done in large part with FLUR and Jolene. They had an abundance of work to put all that information together, which helped to put the recommendations together and so I wouldn't let that go without that acknowledgement. Strategic Plan. Now, this is something all of you helped to put together, which I appreciate. Staff took the direction that we thought we heard with regard to council's input and put together the combined value of the 2018 strategic plan that you shouldn't have at your positions or either having given to you in the packet from last weekend. You gave us the broader goals that are numbered and that are sort of the main headings with regard to each element, each of the major components of our strategic plan. We took that and tried to fill in with regard to the lettered portions of the plan, which as you can see, is much more detail and directive that we think we should be taking in order to satisfy what you told us from a broader context. And so with that, I would ask that you consider this and hopefully adopt by resolution in a meeting coming up here real soon, the plan that we've proposed for your. Yes, sir, absolutely. We've got another one here, someone needs a hard copy. Sir, please. You can have that. Councilman Hoover, you probably haven't seen our info packet.
Well, I think it was in here.
It should have been in the info packet, yep.
Yeah, and if, but the thing is, if it's not here, then I'm consistently looking in the wrong spot. Would this be, would I be able to go on the website and pull this off?
Correct.
Then it's gonna be on here, it's in school.
The regular package.
Not the info package, just the regular package.
Yes, sir, that's correct. So, Mr. Mayor, council, I think whatever questions you have or whatever.
Any questions about it or are people looking for it, looking at it?
And what do you want now that we're forced to think about?
What I'd like to do, Mr. Mayor, councilman, is bring this forward in a real simple resolution that you would take the formal steps to approving.
Thank you.
Be okay with that, bring it forward with it.
Thank you.
Mr. Hoover, that, or Councilman Hoover, that's like the old Roman, they use the old Roman. I didn't invent that, they invented that.
What we usually do is if the mayor asks for support or not, we just thumbs up, thumbs down. I'll kinda look at you, too.
If I don't support it, I'll get the tantrum and you'll know.
That's what I was hoping for.
It's like the judges of old, when they came in and he was going like this, you knew you were in trouble.
Okay, agenda review. Anything we need to go over, Carter?
You know, you don't have a grid in front of you, it hasn't changed much at all from last week, so if it pleases the council, we can probably forego that. Outstanding, outstanding.
I know that Charlie's not here, so I don't, does anybody have anything they want to talk about legislatively or?
Just concerning the.
Oh, the agenda, yeah, I'm sorry, Chris.
If I could be excused on the April 10th work session, I'm not here for work.
We're saving all the power.
We just changed the rules.
We just changed the rules.
Go ahead, Dallas.
Is my resolution going to be on?
It's in April.
April 3rd, I believe, yes.
So next Tuesday.
I didn't see it.
Is it not on there?
Yeah.
I, I think we plan on having it, if you don't see it on the grid, it's, it's my anticipation.
Is it on the actual agenda? Does it have an actual agenda?
For the 3rd.
That you can get on Friday.
And so what about the, where's the situation with the repeal of that unconstitutional ordinance?
That is planned for the second meeting in April.
Which one?
The second business meeting in April.
Unconstitutional ordinance that passed.
Which one?
You might have missed the meeting, but it's the one where I can get rid of you if I don't like your shoes.
Oh, that one, yeah. When I try to get rid of it, 24th. It seemed there was support from the forum.
But, but the resolution is on the meeting for April 3rd, because I don't see here, but it'll be on the agenda.
Count on it, April 3rd.
Thank you.
You betcha.
Mr. Mayor-
Yes, Mike.
I will not be able to be here a week from tonight, I have to be down in St. Louis for a doctor appointment.
Take note of that, too? Thank you.
I don't know if there's such a thing as can you call in and listen in on, because that will be a regular council.
It's a regular council meeting, yes.
The work session.
So if you want to, you could, we could, we could get you in to the phone, if you'd like that.
If you want to just observe it, it's running live.
Yeah.
We find you to, due to Facebook or something.
Okay.
I'll give you a brief paragraph.
Technology overload.
Councilman Hopkins can help you out with that.
Is there anything further that needs to be done with the court system?
Mr. Mayor, Councilman, I think we got the direction we needed. And so in likewise fashion, we'll come forward with a resolution that would adopt that formally.
And when are we going to do that? Because you want it implemented by July 1st.
Correct. I thought that was April as well, Flur?
Is that April 3rd?
I think it's the, the second meeting in April, the second business meeting in April.
Thank you.
Anything else? No, let's leave it at update. Does anybody have anything they want to share? Council on the table? So Mike, normally what we do, too, in our work sessions, especially, one second, we usually go around, depending upon what's going on, obviously, you're talking, I'm beginning to share at this point, but, but sometimes with the meetings that we go to or the things out in public or concerns, possibly that we've heard from constituents, we bring it up. And so we usually go around the table if anybody has anything they want to share. Sometimes we don't, sometimes we do, so it just kind of depends. Dallas generally usually has something.
Legislatively agenda.
Yeah.
Charles Gray, we had him on a report to Wyoming, and one of the things that failed was interesting, which is they were trying to pass a municipal statute that would allow referendums on council members, so you could get rid of them. And it failed terribly and miserably. So what, what I, why I'm mentioning that is because the legislature just doesn't want to pass anything like that, and I agree with them. It failed, it says it was the worst vote against something that was proposed down there, and, and so I'm, I keep thinking when we repeal this terrible ordinance that got passed, that we just don't replace it with anything. We, we, we go on the basis of whatever the state law is and call it good. I think that's the better plan for us. So I just wanted to say that to everybody in here.
Is that what we decided at the last meeting?
Well, there, there's a, they came up with some other convoluted, the city attorney's office came up with another ordinance. I just don't want to pass an ordinance against anybody. I think that voters should decide who they vote in and vote out, and the state statute applies, if you're a terrible criminal, you can get thrown off. And other than that, it's the people, it's the people's choice.
What's the terrible ordinance that I don't seem to know about?
Well, they passed an ordinance-
2013 or '14?
Back when Mr. Hetquist was on here on the council.
'14.
Oh, okay.
And that ordinance was one that when it came up, I wish I'd have come, came down and spoken, but I think-
Yeah, that was one of those.
Councilman Johnson voted against it.
No, I was running for election at that time, I, that was outspoken.
But I think that they, they just didn't get good advice on that, and the city attorney-
I know, I know what you're talking about now.
City attorneys researched it, and he believes it's unconstitutional. I believe it's unconstitutional, I think you should look at it yourself, make your own definition, but I'd like to see that go away and just follow the state law. I think it's the best thing we can possibly do for future councils.
So a lot will be coming up, we'll be discussing that.
Yeah, okay. I just, it sounded like such an intriguing secret that I just had to vote.
That's Dallas.
A former, a former councilman said, he thought you could get thrown off if you were wearing red shoes.
Poor Mike still.
It was that bad.
Go ahead, Kenny.
Do you have any interesting upcoming meetings or proclamations? I've got a leadership student or college student that kind of needs something like that for part of a homework project.
Yes. What's that?
This is the Divile.
This is the Divile, I know I have it here.
Jolene, you remember that?
It was for the-
The bikers.
The biker group.
The biker groups, I'm going to be doing that, Blessing of the Bikes, I'll be doing that one in fifth. I know I've got a couple other ones, Kenny, if you want to. I'm doing a Welcome to the Seroptimus on the 27th.
April.
Mm-hmm. I'm also doing something at the Wyoming Meth Conference on the 12th, I'll be speaking there. I'll be doing an opening for that on the second day. I'm doing a sexual assault proclamation on the 10th. And that's it, for right now, for April. I'm sure there'll be a few, I think there's a few more I've got written down that I've got going, but those are the ones I've got right now.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Yeah. Anything else? What'd you think, Mike? You want to stay?
Well, yeah, oh, no, I'm in for a dime, I'm in for a dollar, but thank you all for making, making me feel welcome and not getting me around too much, yeah.
Well, we appreciate it.
I would like to point something out with Councilman Huber. Councilman Huber has a deep and quite broad understanding of court systems.
You think?
No, I don't, I know.
So I mentioned to him-
I know nothing.
When I went by his house the other night, I mentioned that to him, and he, we both had a kind of a laugh, but he does, and I'm happy he's here because he can, he can look at that one with a different eye, because he's run courts, he's run budgets, hired people, hired people.
And, and Mr. Mayor, something else that I, I think I would just mention to everybody, I have, since I retired, periodically gone and sat in and heard cases on assignment with the circuit court. Now that I'm in this position and expressed the interest in running for election, I will no longer be doing that, you know, that, that ethical line kind of stands out there, and I'll be advised-
I think there might be a statue about it, too.
Oh, there probably is, but, but, yeah, that, that issue, that will be, and I just want, want to make certain with all of you folks, all understand, you know, where I'm going to be on that, that issue.
I have a feeling you're not a one-trick pony, too, so I just, we're not going to piggyback as just the judge.
Yeah.
I think you're more than that.
Yeah, if you did that to me, I'd leave, bro.
Yeah. You have a lot to offer us.
Yeah, well, I hope.
Carter, yes.
But I do want to thank y'all for the courtesy of making me feel welcome.
Mr. Mayor, in response to Councilman Larry's point, you can expect a timeline for hiring your judge coming out in your information packet this weekend, and certainly if you have feedback on that, we would be open. Once you see it.
Thanks, everyone, appreciate it.
And I have nothing further to say. I don't care if you want me to say anything or not.
You don't have to answer that, Gene.
Thanks, everybody, we covered a lot of ground tonight, I really appreciate it.
Come on, Cindy.
Covered a lot of ground.
Let's get out of here.